Okay, we are going to call this committee the whole to order at 6:30 PM. And just welcome our newest newest appointed counselor, Monique Antoine Hartley, who is joining us for her first meeting. Welcome and in at the deep end, here we go. So we'll move forward with adoption of the agenda and the motion reads, move by Deputy Mayor Foddy, seconded by Counsel Maybe, that the agenda be adopted as amended to reorder the agenda items and move number item four in camera and item number five, reporting out of in camera to the end of the agenda to items 10 and 11 respectively, and that counsel waive the procedural bylaw for this meeting to accommodate the reordering of the agenda items as outlined above. So the only change is that removing the in camera to the end. So any questions or comments in regards to that? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? And it is carried. Next item is Declaration of Curious or General Nature thereof. Does anybody have an interest to declare this evening? I have no hands up. So we'll move forward with number four, which is delegations and presentations. And we are very happy to welcome Jane Hess in regards to Every Kid in Our Communities Coalition for Leeds and Grenville. And she's going to share information about that program with us this evening. So welcome Jane.
Is that showing up as it should? I guess it's not in presentation form yet. Thank you very much. I have a timer. Just let me put my timer on. First, putting my timer on takes time, right? I apologize. I had it right up, but it disappeared. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for having me tonight and it's lovely to be in your beautiful chambers. It's gorgeous. Lovely ride tonight, no snow. Thank goodness. I'm Jane Hess. I'm the coordinator of Every Kid in Our Community and some of you may know me from different worlds that I've lived in. One was I was the community impact officer for United Way for a couple of years. And then I also worked at the Leeds-Grenville Landmark District Health Unit as a director and chief nursing officer for about, well, I was that for about 10 years, but I worked at the health unit for 30 years. So children, youth and families have always been my area of interest as a nurse. And so working for Every Kid in Our Community in a coalition that I was one of the founding members of is, you know, kind of an interesting turnaround in my life as I kind of look at things now. I wanted to talk a little bit about Every Kid in Our Community and I will send you, I maybe did send you my speaking notes. Because I, first one I did of these, I started talking about Start With Hello and people ask questions about Every Kid. So Every Kid is a coalition of all child, youth and family service providers in Leeds and Grenville. It's been happening since about 2002 when people just said, we need to work together rather than separately because the sum of our parts is greater than us individually. So we've been doing it since about 2002, getting together and doing different campaigns. We've done a variety of things over the years. So if you know Connect Youth, R&amp;J Youth Services, the Birm and GAN, which you probably are familiar with, those are all programs that have come together. Not so much R&amp;J and those programs, those are our agencies, but then the program like the Birm is an example of how Every Kid in Our Communities work together to meet a need in a community. And I think there was a need that came up in GAN. There was some kids with violence in parks and, you know, with the police and, and R&amp;J and Every Kid, they came together and then Brockville Y came together to put that program together and it's been quite successful. So that's what Every Kid is. We do have a website. It's simple. It's everykid.ca. If you want to see who our members are, there are 45 signed on members. We probably get 20 at our monthly coalition meetings. And one of the areas that we've really not ever targeted or reached out to particularly was municipalities. And because of my work at the health unit and knowing about how municipal plans include built environment and climate change and those kinds of things, when you're thinking about what you're doing for your municipality, then, you know, kids, children and families make a lot of sense to think about how you're going to incorporate those into that. So from that, one of the things that we started prior to the pandemic was Start With Hello. And Start With Hello, sure I got the advance here. Start With Hello is what we want to do. And then from there, we want you to build positive relationships, particularly with children and youth. And I think a lot of times you already know the parents, but it's the kids and the youth. We want to make a difference in someone's life and help them feel accepted, included and valued. And you know, as a municipality, you really want people to either stay here as adults and get jobs and work and pay taxes, or if they go away to school, you want them to come back and live in your community. So a welcoming community as a child or a youth that then they think about later on, where do I want to live? Where do I want to raise my kids? That kind of thing. So it has an economic impact when you think about it in the long term. This was adapted from the Sandy Hook Promise for all adults and influencers of youth. We want kids to feel safe, included, valued and connected. And we use the developmental framework. And because my vision is not great, I have to read them off the one I wrote on. And those are express care, challenge growth, provide support, share power and expand possibilities. We went to youth and this was a Let's Talk survey that was done, I think, through a number of agencies, particularly at Stingers in Brockville, the after-school program that's run by, was run by the police and R&amp;J Youth. And so what do you want adults to talk to you like, or what do you want them to say? So some of them are, and I won't read them all, just read a couple. Make conversations with us. Be confident people that just start convos. Try harder to make youth feel involved because they'll be ruling this city, obviously it was done in Brockville, after the grownups pass. So there's a number of different things there and that's from a survey that we did in 2019. Haven't done it since. We don't think kids are a whole lot different than they were prior to that, other than we know from a mental health perspective, they have more anxiety and other kinds of mental health issues since the pandemic. So this was adapted by Every Kid for all adults and influencers of youth. We want kids to have positive and caring adult relationships. And we want a community where all children and youth are valued. And we know from the developmental assets framework, the developmental relationships, that young people need to be surrounded by three or more non-parent adults who love, who love, care and appreciate them. And so when you think about that, you think about your coaches, hockey, you know, basketball, singing teachers, you know, there's a variety of people in the community that do play that important role. And we know that more kids who have more of those adult influencers have more assets and do more positive things in their community and are less likely to get involved with drugs and crime. It comes from the Search Institute, so it's well evidenced, the developmental assets frameworks. It talks about those positive experience, skills, opportunities, qualities, basically what kids need to be successful. There are external ones, support, empowerment, boundaries and expectations, constructive use of time. So anything that you do in a municipality from a recreation perspective and what you offer in the summer for your, for your kids and youth and throughout the year are those constructive use of time things. The internal assets, we want kids to have a commitment to learning, have positive values, social competencies and a positive identity. The more assets, I really already spoke to this slide, the more assets that kids have, the less likely they are to get into negative behaviors and more apt they are to do well in school, specifically engaged in value diversity. What have we done so far? We started, kicked this off with a presentation to the Brockville City Council in November, basically around the National Day of the Child, UNICEF National Day of the Child. And so they will declare that next year. So I'm going to send out something to all the municipal clerks prior to National Child Day because it might be something you as a municipality want to proclaim as something important for you. And then I'm doing the roadshow to all the municipalities in Leeds and Grenville. And then we do have an asset builder spring event. So in that event, we ask children, youth, parents, municipal counselors, fire rescue people to say, who in our community is an asset builder for youth? Somebody that might be quietly doing something over there that they don't think they're doing anything important, but you see that influence. And you can nominate them. And so we'll have nominations go out. Again, I'll send that out to your municipal clerk so that you have the deadline date for that. We've had, done this for quite a number of years. During COVID, I think we had two virtual Zoom presentations, but we usually do it at the Brockville Y. It's now expanded to Landmark County as well because we had last year, we had people from Landmark putting asset builder names in for Leeds and Grenville. Some of them are very interesting. If you remember, there used to be a grocery store in Brockville by Saint Michael's. Our Saint, what's it? Can't remember the name of the high school. Is that awful? Anyways, but Saint Mary's, right? It was an M word. So the kids would come in at lunch and the clerk at the store would say, how are you doing? How'd your exam go? People that worked at McDonald's by Seth Grenville, same thing. They were nominated as well. Office, you know, your principal, so you know how your office manager in your school, we had with the one from Front of Young nominated last year. Her name is Mrs. Powers and they called her Mrs. Powerful or something like that because she was so wonderful to them. So there's all those people. Some of them are doing it in the context of their job, but we all know that even though people may be a teacher or maybe an office administrator, they do things so above and beyond what is expected of them in their job description. So that's what asset builders are. And we encourage you to think about that as municipality of who you might like to nominate from your municipality. We have lots of promotional materials. You have a gorgeous lobby. A great big poster, Start With Hello would be beautiful out there. And, you know, when I wear my button, people say to me, what's that all about? Well, if you see that kid walking down the street with his hoodie down and you normally just kind of walk around, why don't you stop and say, hi, how are you today? You having a good day? And they look at you like you're weird, but it does make a difference. So we have many materials available. I've given you a few of those. The posts, the buttons were made by the clients of Developmental Services of Leeds and Grenville. We bought the materials, Health Unit printed the paper and they did the work for us. So again, it's a big community effort. So I give you the Breaking the Ice card. It gives you some tips. That's the kind of the photocopied paper one. Simple things, a smile, a comment, a listening ear. You can have more of those if you want. Those are printed at the health unit so we can get more of those. And have a look at the card before you go out. So you'll know what to say if you come across someone. Many people in here probably do this already all the time though. So I'm just, maybe I'm already talking to the choir. What's the long term with Start With Hello? Well, we'd like you as a municipality to work developmental aspects, assets into everyday life and work it into your municipal plan. Like as I mentioned with climate change or built environment, to think specifically about children, youth and families through a developmental assets framework. We know most municipalities do many things for children and youth, but we'd like it to be through the developmental assets lens so that all of the 13 municipalities in Leeds and Grenville would be working on this, in the same framework. And that's my presentation. Where am I for time? I'm usually fine, but I always set it.
Good. We'll take a few questions. Is there anybody that has any questions in regards to the presentation?
Oh, I do have one more thing. Sorry. We are creating a municipal toolkit.
Oh, great.
And it was owned by the Healthy Communities Partnership through the Health Unit. We're taking it over, kind of with the Health Unit, working on it to have it available for municipalities to use as the tool to work it into their municipal plans. You know, kind of for all of the things I've said, so what are the things that you want to do? Give youth a voice, celebrate and recognize youth's success. So there's some strategies in it that are actual usable strategies as well.
Right.
One of the things at Augusta, the other night when I was speaking to them, they found a grant from Hydro One where you could set up a youth council in your municipality if you don't already have one. So I don't know the details of that, but it might be something to look at. We said, I said, you know, not meaning to be punning, but it was, you know, share power if you have a youth council in your community from Hydro One, so.
That's cool.
Okay, sorry.
No, that's all right. Questions from council members? I don't have any hands up at this. Oh, I have Counsel Maybe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. So many kids have gone through the program and you said it started in 2002, correct? So.
Yeah, it is a program. I guess I'd just like to, it's a collective. So we work on the collective collective impact model so that we work together as agencies. It's not a program, but we would do things together such as the Start With Hello campaign, such as seeing an issue and get an OQW and pulling together R&amp;J, the Y, GAN Police, et cetera, to then create the Birm and a solution for something that's an issue in a community. So it isn't really a program, although we did have money from the criminal court fund for a while and we used to have a grant system through that. We don't have that money any longer. So we kind of always looked for money. What can we do? What can we do to work together? John Howard Society through their Connect Youth Program is putting in a grant to the federal government. And so as a collective, we sent a letter of support for that, that we were willing to work collectively on advertising, spreading the word. You know, as a group, we would work toward that because if we got that money for Leeds and Grenville, I think it was going to hire two more permanent youth workers. So that kind of work, does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah. So it's a collective of different groups within their own communities coming together to assist the youth that are out there. And is there a number of youth that you may have touched over the course of time?
Probably if you look at a thing like Stingers in Brockville as an example, hundreds through that program. And often that program, while it's run by R&amp;J and it was the Brockville Police, lots of agencies do come together to provide support for that. For a number of years, we had a bus from GAN that was going to the Tuesday Night Program. So, you know, I guess numbers are there, but it's, it's, it's kind of like a results-based accountability thing. You can't say you do X and you get Y. It's collectively, we do this and it creates the environment that gets us Y.
And just as a follow-up.
Yep.
Have, has there been somebody come back to you and say, I remember when, or you did this for me, or like a good feel story that you've had come back to you?
I don't know that they would come back to us as a collective. I think they would come back to the individual agencies that then worked with that, that child or youth. I remember one time in the Healthy Babies Program, because the Health Unit is part of the, of Every Kid. We had a young mom who finished high school and got accepted to college. So collectively, this was from the Health Unit, we gave her a card, a congratulations card. It was the first card that woman or girl, she was about 18, had ever received in her entire life.
Yeah, means a lot.
Means a lot, yeah. So it's, sometimes those little things are so intangible.
Yep.
And.
But they mean something, which is why it's important to do the little things because they turn into big things.
They do, yeah. And she went to college.
Which is great.
It's too bad we don't have as much college programs for those people right at the moment, but we can work on that too.
That's, that's definitely another challenge at a different level of government. It's not on our agenda tonight anyways.
Anyways.
We do appreciate you coming to speak to us, Jane, and thank you very much for sharing that. And hopefully everybody will wear their button proudly and make the extra effort and take the time to realize that saying hello can make a difference in someone's day.
And there may be something in, someone in your community that you think would want to take this on, take a lead on it. That would might be one of the things you could do. And definitely important to make those children, you feel welcome so they come back and pay taxes for us.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. So we will move on with 4.2, which is 2024 Asset Management Plan. So Moya Taylor is joining us virtually up on the screen. Well, Moya, am I saying that right?
Yep, Moya, that's right.
Perfect. And she is with PSD Citywide Inc., which we have heard lots about and this. So we'll have you share your screen and you can get into your presentation.
Just want to make sure you guys can see that there.
You can see it.
Okay, perfect. All right. So thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening and thank you for inviting me here today. As you mentioned, my name is Moya Taylor and I'm an asset management advisor with PSD Citywide. I was the primary consultant that has been working with the township staff to develop this asset management plan. And I would first like to thank the staff for their cooperation and dedication as we work throughout this project. Today I will be reviewing the updates that we made to this iteration of the AMP to ensure it meets legislative requirements for 2024. But before diving into the specifics of the AMP, I just wanted to provide an overview on the context of the project and asset management in general. So the Township of Leeds and Thousand Islands has been working with PSD Citywide for a number of years now, including their 2021 Asset Management Plan. For this project, we aimed to develop an asset management plan that was compliant with the second leg of OREG 58817. And I will talk more about the specifics of that regulation later on. So as part of the current project, we held supporting workshops with staff covering the four areas you see here on the screen, inventory data refinement, risk and criticality analysis, lifecycle framework development and levels of service. So why the need for municipal asset management? We acknowledge that municipal infrastructure assets are vital for communities and from our perspective, we need a way to organize what we own, a way to understand what services we provide through those assets and a way to ensure accountability to our residents and stakeholders for the services that they're using. These three key objectives are really the driving force behind not only the regulation, but the increased awareness among various stakeholders on the need for asset management. And from a municipal perspective, the value is the level of service that we are providing to our residents. So a high level set of parameters that we can use to determine the level of service of a particular system or network is shown here on this screen. So we have the cost. How much will it cost the town to replace or repair a given asset and when will that cost be required? Performance, what is the current output or performance of the asset? What kind of condition is it in? And finally, risks. So what is the potential risk of the asset failing? Who will be impacted if it were to fail? And are we able to identify high-risk assets? To fully determine the level of service that we are providing and then to identify critical steps to address potential downturns on the level of service, asset management should be spread throughout the organization and this starts with the asset portfolio or the asset inventory. In short, the township should work towards establishing a centralized asset inventory that is agreed upon by all stakeholders and has the critical data points that are needed to identify the risk, cost and performance and ultimately the level of service. So with the completion of this AMP, the township has established a centralized asset inventory that contains the four key items that were mentioned. So we do have a tangible capital asset inventory. Condition assessments were applied in there from road needs studies, OSIF reports, the lifecycle and risk models that we developed as part of this project are in there. And finally, we did have input and collaboration with staff, consultants and factoring in general market data. So now to talk a little bit more about the regulation and what we actually mean in terms of compliance with that regulation. So Ontario Regulation 58817 has defined requirements for three AMP iterations. The first one was required by July 1st, 2022. It centered around current levels of service, asset inventory analysis, current performance of assets, lifecycle activities and costs to maintain current levels of service, and also impacts of growth on current levels of service for your core asset categories. So your core asset categories were roads, stormwater, water, sanitary and bridges. And the township did meet those requirements with the last iteration of their AMP. With the completion of this AMP, the township has achieved full compliance with the 2024 requirements. So the 2024 requirements are the same as the 2022 requirements. However, this time we also had to analyze the non-core assets. So the non-core assets include your facilities, your vehicles, machinery and equipment and land improvement assets. And then you can see that by July 1st, 2025, there's also additional requirements that center around proposed levels of service, including proposed performance of assets, lifecycle activities and costs to achieve proposed levels of service, an updated financial strategy and also impacts of growth on proposed levels of service. Then what comes after 2025? So the regulation does require that all AMPs be updated once every five years, that counsel conduct an annual review of its asset management progress on or before July 1st and that the asset management policy and plan be posted to the municipal website. So specifically talking about the project we've been working on, the 2024 AMP, it was developed based on the asset inventory as of December 31st, 2022. And this presentation will provide an overview of the current state of municipal infrastructure, provide some recommendations to increase confidence in analysis and decision-making and also show the township's financial capacity to meet long-term capital requirements. So we have here the total replacement cost of the asset portfolio. Myself and the staff have been working closely together to refine the asset inventory in Citywide to ensure that the AMP provides a realistic and accurate representation of the current state of municipal infrastructure. This included reviewing and updating replacement costs of each asset category. The replacement costs for each asset category are displayed here on the screen. And as you can see, the total replacement cost of the asset portfolio is 148 million. I would like to address that the last iteration of the AMP listed the total replacement cost as 209 million. This decrease is a result of a thorough review and staff input, ensuring that existing replacement costs in the system are as accurate as possible. As part of this process, we did reassess the road replacement costs. So you'll see that they have significantly decreased since the last AMP. This is because previously all road replacement costs were based on urban roads. However, after reviewing the roads inventory, we were able to categorize the roads into rural and urban classifications. And we were able to provide a more precise replacement costs for the reconstruction of each road type, rural having a lower replacement cost than the urban roads would have. We do use a different, a variety of replacement cost methods for the asset portfolio. You can see here which ones we primarily use for each asset category. So as I mentioned, we use a range of methods to determine the replacement cost. This AMP relied on both user-defined or cost per unit and cost inflation or CPI tables. So the user-defined and cost per unit is typically based on numbers that are provided to us by the municipal staff. We would get them from, you know, recent contracts, engineering reports or staff estimates based on their knowledge and experience. The cost inflation or CPI tables is when we take the historical cost of the asset and inflate it based on consumer price indexing or non-residential building construction price index. The user-defined costs are, when they're based on a reliable source, they're reasonably accurate and they are a reliable way to determine asset replacement costs. When we use cost inflation, it's typically because we don't have any reliable replacement cost data. That can be reliable for recently purchased or constructed assets. But as we know, as assets age and new products and technologies become available, inflation becomes a less reliable method. As you can see, the majority of asset categories for this AMP did rely on user-defined or cost per unit methods. And this resulted in a high level of accuracy in the total replacement costs reflected. The accuracy and reliability of replacement costs and lifecycle costs is critical for asset management. Here you can see the condition of the asset portfolio. So this is also central to all asset management planning. You can see the distribution of asset condition by asset category and this is weighted by replacement cost. Collectively, 75% of assets in Leeds and Thousand Islands are in fair or better condition. And the condition of the assets relies on both age-based and field condition data. So the chart here displays the percentage of assets that had condition assessments applied and the source of that assessment. So overall, assessed condition data was available for 61% of assets. For the remaining portfolio, we did use age as an approximation of condition. Age-based condition does typically overstate needs and overall deficit, whereas assessed condition data can build confidence and decision-making. We do use the assessed condition data in asset management decision-making to mitigate any risks associated with asset failure, to identify the most economic intervention and to accurately predict the future expenditure requirements. So in considering that, having to find the replacement costs, the condition of the assets and identifying any lifecycle activities, a long-term capital forecast was developed. This included both asset rehabilitation and replacement requirements. The graph here displays the capital requirements over the next 175 years. We use that projection because it ensures that every asset has gone through one full iteration of replacement. And you can see that the average annual capital requirement is approximately 3.9 million. And as you can see, the township is committing approximately 3.3 million towards capital projects per year from sustainable revenue sources. So when we talk about sustainable revenue sources, this would include your CCBF, your OSIF, tax allocations and reserves. The average annual requirements for both tax and rate-funded assets to continue to provide the current level of service, as I mentioned, totals 3.9 million. So this is resulting in an annual deficit of roughly 584,000. Put differently, the assets are currently funded at 86% of their long-term capital requirements. And here we can see the target versus the actual reinvestment rate. So the target reinvestment rate looks at the annual capital requirements as a percentage of total replacement cost, whereas the. whereas the actual reinvestment rate is looking at the actual funding that you guys have available for those asset categories as a percentage of the total replacement cost. We can see here that the target reinvestment rate is 2.6%, while the actual reinvestment rate is 2.2%. So by comparing the target versus actual reinvestment rates, you can actually see the extent of any existing funding gap. So based on the current infrastructure deficit, it is recommended that tax-funded assets see an increase of 0.3% annually, and water rates increase by 2.3% annually for the next 15 years. This will be solely for the purpose of phasing in full funding to the asset categories covered in the AMP and eliminating that infrastructure deficit. Based on our analysis, on the information we have in Citywide, it was recommended that no sanitary rate increases required. It's also important to note that these numbers do not factor in one-time grants or non-sustainable sources of revenue. These will continue to be an essential source of revenue for investment and capital infrastructure. Also, adjustments to taxes should be supplemented with project prioritization and evaluation of the desired level of service. Finally, we can look at recommendations and next steps. It is recommended to continue to review and refine the asset inventory in consultation with internal departments and stakeholders. It's also recommended that a portfolio-wide data governance strategy be implemented to increase the accuracy and confidence in the data, and to develop an established cycle for updating replacement costs and condition information within Citywide. In regards to next steps, the township will have to start preparing for the 2025 requirements. This includes identifying proposed levels of service and also developing a medium-to-long-term external communication strategy to engage the public on asset management and get their feedback to inform the development of those proposed levels of service. The township has already signed their charter for the 2025 AMP with PSD Citywide, so we will be starting on that shortly. And lastly, we must consider continuous improvement and regular review. So it's important to note that the AMP is a living document, and it should be updated regularly to inform long-term planning. Accordingly, the yearly capital operating budget should include funding for the assessment of the township's assets that will be used to update future iterations of the plan. So that's everything for me. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you very much. Questions from council in regards to this? Go ahead, Councilor Gurrell.
Thank you, and through you, your worship. Thanks very much for the presentation. And over the weekend, I had the pleasure of reading the full statement that was released regarding the plan. And it brought to mind a couple of questions. The obvious one is, we're using the tangible assets from 2022. And I just wanted to be clear, the numbers, the dollar values provided, and the replacement costs, et cetera, are they from 2022-style data? Or are they from current 2024 and five data?
Yes, so the replacement costs are 2022 numbers. So anywhere that we did use inflation, we inflated it up to 2022. And we looked at the numbers from 2022, along with when we were doing the financial strategy. We looked at your budgeted numbers for 2022. So all the numbers in the AMP are based on 2022 values. And just to confirm, that does meet OREG requirements, which allows you to use data from up to two calendar years prior to when the AMP is released. However, the 2025 one will be updated with some 2023 or potentially 2024 numbers.
I'm sorry, when's the update then? When's the next update? Because it seems to me, when I look through those numbers, we're trying to have some confidence. You came up with a number of 580 blah blah thousand dollars, and it all sounds great. But I don't have any confidence that it's a useful number, because the replacement costs have inflated so much. We sit around this table every day, and all we see is inflated numbers, whether it's for fire trucks, whether it's for fire halls, or whatever. So what confident level do we have here in that number? Because you're providing a structure which is spectacular, but the numbers seem questionable. Thanks.
I go to the treasurer for this one, Moya, if you don't mind?
Yeah, through you, Mayor. So just a couple notes. So the reason we use 2022 was because when we began the process, that was the most up-to-date audited financial numbers we had. So that's why we chose 2022. In terms of inflation, it is hard to keep up with inflation. I believe Moya spoke earlier. For a lot of the areas, we are using user-defined costs as a replacement. A big example of that is fleet specifically. No inflation is keeping up with how fleet's gone. So based on what we are buying, you know, a pumper for now for 850, we've manually adjusted those replacement costs to reflect those current costs to get away from just using inflationary measures. So those have been updated based on the user-defined costs that Dave and myself, and the fire chief would have provided.
I don't want to sound argumentative, but that sounds, isn't what I read in the documents. It doesn't say that one way or the other, not to be argumentative, but there seemed to be a lot of missing puzzle pieces in the dollar values. For instance, if I was to go through that again, we could look at fire, pardon me, fleet. We could look at buildings and so on. And I just find it hard to believe that we used current numbers on those assessments. So you're saying that the 585 or 600,000 is a valid number for us to be looking at here? Or should we be thinking double that or something?
So to speak to that infrastructure deficit of 600,000, that is a number in time. Now, that number doesn't, on the long range, it does. So when they say, like, the recommendation, increase the tax rate X percent over 15 years to bridge that gap, that number is not accounting for the infrastructure deficit each year of that 15 years. That's also not counting inflation, and it's also not counting for non-replacements or upgrades. So for example, one of our projects right now is every year we upgrade, we've been upgrading gravel roads to a higher class of roads. Those upgrades of those gravel roads aren't being captured currently in that long range, because the asset management plan doesn't account for that upgrade to a higher level of service at the time. So there are gaps, certainly, and that's why it's a living document that we're always trying to make better and more accurate and more reflective. But it's incremental improvement.
I think I can make this a little simpler. So to the point, the question that you were making, you were asking, Brock, was in regards to how much of this is, you know, wishful thinking versus hard data based on today? Is that, I'm just going to boil down, make it simple, because we have to look at it from a resident point of view, too. We sit around and talk about these things a lot. But for the example, is as this plan continues to be used and refined, I'll give the very specific example, which is the tandem truck. So originally, when the first iteration of this plan was done, the tandem truck was replaceable at a cost of 263, or 263 million, 263,000. When we actually replaced it, it was 453, sorry, 486,000. So when that happened, they went back into the system and manually changed it. So it is reflective of a more accurate number, not just using an inflation number.
Once again, not to sound argumentative in the least, but the document I read, the one that was presented as a attachment. I appreciate that currently, the asset management plan in a computer probably has those numbers. What I'm trying to discern is, the report that I read, that we all have in front of us, is it accurate financially speaking?
You're talking about the gap?
I'm talking about the 144-page asset management plan here that was presented to me, and I read every page of it. Replacement, for instance, 61 million is a 28% miss on the roads. Okay, that kind of triggered a little bit of angst about the rest of the numbers. That's a big, big number. So I appreciate, I guess I'm asking, the numbers that are in front of me were based and are based on 2022. They are based on replacement costs of 2022, not current. But I do understand that in our computers today, we would have the updated numbers. So I'm getting back to, what's my confidence level in 560, 80,000 being the shortfall?
So when we... I was just going to say, when we developed the asset management plan, the numbers that we are reporting on are the numbers that are in Citywide. The inventory is provided to the staff for review before we put those numbers in. So any of those numbers that were manually updated prior to when the inventory reports were developed are the numbers that are presented in the asset management plan.
What's that?
Yeah.
So go to the treasurer.
So a couple to build on that. So one of the things we identified was that, at the end of 2022, in our capital inventory, the Ivy Lee project had not been done yet. So we did manually adjust what the system at the time was saying would have been the replacement cost based on the old capital cost inflated was nowhere reflective of what, we knew what the cost was, because we were pretty much wrapping it up at that point of doing it. So that was updated to reflect the replacement cost more accurately in this AMP. It's just that the inventory wasn't updated to say that we had done it yet, because it's as of 2022. But the replacement of it is reflective of what it cost us.
But the question that Councilor Gurrell is asking is the confidence level in the 584,000 deficit. But it's a moving target, because as we find more and more accuracies that we can make and override in the system to be reflective, not just of inflationary data, that this number will get more refined. Is that a fair statement?
That's a fair statement. I would also say that the range that that number is based on, the annual requirement of 3.8 and change, was a pretty, pretty long range, as Moya said. They were trying to make sure that every asset went through one complete cycle. So for example, if you looked at our 10-year capital plan that we bring with budget, it's much shorter term, that annual requirement is about 4.7 million. Now, that includes some things that aren't in there, because of new projects that we know that we're proposing over the next couple of years. But that number is, it is a good number. It shows you something you're working towards. Everyone has an infrastructure deficit. The bigger thing I would say is how that number has come down since the last iteration. Now, part of that is because of that 60 million road asset, so that came down, so the requirement came down. But it does show how much more we are contributing to capital each year from the last one, and it is shrinking. Will it ever get to zero? Probably not, just the way things work and the other demands. But we are making it smaller, and it is becoming much more sufficient that way.
Okay. Dave, I'll let Director Holliday get in for a second to add to that, and then I'll let you finish up or wrap up, Councilor.
Thanks. Sorry, just to add to what Phil was saying. On page 20 of the document, you'll see the sliding scales with the reds and yellows and greens. If you look specifically at Parks and Land Improvements as an example, there's a big red block for 2.8 million. That's Ivy Lee. So because it hadn't been completed yet, it's still in the red. But the value of Ivy Lee, like Phil had touched on, is actually in there as the real number. Similarly, with the facilities, 6.8 million correlates directly with the new fire hall. So because it hasn't been completed yet, now when we do the update and the hall is completed, then you'll see that that red disappears, and there's no longer a red in that area. So it is constantly evolving, and the cost that we had at the time, we implemented those as part of the plan when this was being constructed. That helps.
Follow it, Councilor.
I guess I just wanted to say, in wrapping it up, I appreciate the process 100%. It's wonderful having read the document and seeing how things come together. It's an exceptional document in that way. However, I still, as I looked over various graphs and whatnot, it is a document, and this is for council's consideration, this is a document that is for rehabilitation and replacement of the assets as of 2022. And now I'm hearing that there are financial numbers in there that are for things that weren't even dreamed about in 2022. So again, the concept is great, and I appreciate it is a living document. It's just, I still don't have a great deal of confidence that the final numbers are right. It's going to take me a while to digest that. It's very complex. And I'm hearing tonight that this is more, there's more in the numbers than straight replacement and rehabilitation of the assets, the tangible assets of this community of 2022. We're now already up to 2024 with a fire hall. And with, but some of the graphs, or pardon me, some of the charts didn't indicate that to me when I went through there. And I'm not asking for them to be redone. I just want an acknowledgement that some of what I read there is, perhaps, in modest air. And if I could probably dig out a chart here, I didn't bother writing one down, because there are quite a few. Anyway, that's my statement. I'm going to leave it at that. I'm just going to take this with a grain of salt. Thanks for the very hard work and everybody putting it together. I appreciate that. And again, I appreciate the concept, and the way it's done is wonderful, and it is what we need. I'm just, I'd have to digest the numbers again. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, worship, and through you. Back to the graph showing the colors on the various conditions. I was puzzled by the storm sewer system showing that it is in very good condition, when in fact, in effect, we are looking at upgrading the Village of Lansdowne alone. So how do we get our stormwater looking that great when we haven't even touched a lot of it?
Go ahead, Director. Oh, sorry, I'm going to go to Director Holliday to answer that question.
Thank you, through your worship. So with the storm sewers, with a lot of the roads that we're looking to build, we don't actually have storm sewers on them. So the condition rating doesn't exist on roads where we currently don't have storm sewers. Where the ones that we do have, that had been rebuilt, like in the Village of Lynnhurst is a good example, where they were constructed about 10 years or so ago. It's age-based, and they're still in good condition. But if you look at Lansdowne, a lot of the roads were using ditches in the urban setting, and which is why we're looking to upgrade to capture our water. Because right now, it's being displaced on private properties, et cetera. So there's no condition rating for sewers that don't exist right now.
Okay, thank you. My next question or point is much along the line of Councilor Gurrell's. When we're looking at a process reaching out 175 years, quite frankly, to me, we've lost focus in that, why are we even trying to go that far ahead? If we back that up 175 years, what our forefathers in 1850 have guessed, our fire department is fighting fires with something other than a rope and a bucket, let alone something sitting on rubber run by an engine? Maybe in 175 years, a click of a mouse, and the fire chief disperses 17 drones to put out a fire, and they'll be there in a matter of seconds, minutes. But I have, the asset management plan, I never questioned. From the time it was implemented by our staff here, brought to us, and the light bulbs went on that first year at the budget, and then thereafter, it just reassures us exactly why we're doing this. And I fully believe in the asset management plan as a whole. But to reach out 175 years, I heard the statement for generational purposes, I don't think we could come within a golf ball's drive of accuracy, much along the line of Councilor Gurrell's questioning for accuracy on finances. I know the staff do a diligent job, and it's obvious every year, a budget time, when they go back, as the mayor had pointed out, and update what the current fire truck is worth versus what we thought it was going to be two years prior. So that's all great, but I'm just, I would like to cut it off at about 30 years. I know 175 years won't affect me sitting in this chair. And someday, I hope somebody else is still using asset management plan to do so. I'm not a wish list that what they would like to see done versus what needs to be done. But I'll just wrap it up at that. That's how I see this. I fully believe in the asset management plan and how it's integrated and how it works. I'll always support it. But reaching out 175 years, you lost me anything past 30 years. Thank you.
I have Councilor Kelman, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I had a question about the reinvestment rates, the target versus actual. I'm just wondering why the actual is, in some cases, particularly like the sanitary sewer system, higher than the target? And I'm sure there's a reason for it, but I just wondered what that was.
So this is... So this is the the slide that has total replacement costs of the.
Target versus actual reinvestment rate is the slide. It's page 19 of the asset management plan.
Yeah, so I can speak to that. So the actual reinvestment or the target reinvestment rates rely on the data that we pull out of citywide. Um, so like Dave mentioned, there's some sanitary sewers that aren't constructed yet. So that that funding wouldn't be accounted for when we're running our, you know, our our calculations out of citywide. Um, so that target reinvestment rate is based on the numbers that we have currently in the citywide system. Whereas the actual funding rate is actually, you know, the numbers provided by you guys um, through the finance department, um, through a capital funding template. Um, so depending on the accuracy of the data that we have in citywide, that is going to, you know, uh, directly affect the accuracy of that target reinvestment rate. So if right now citywide isn't reporting on everything that you guys have or all of the requirements that you would have, that is why the actual will be showing as higher than the target in this case.
Thank you. So um, just for clarity, we're our actual investment rate at 2.2, we're just slightly behind by 0.4% on an annual basis. I'm gonna go to our treasurer for that.
Yeah, through you mayor. I just one thing to add on the water and sewer. The contribution we make every year is the what's left between our operating budget and the rate. So that fluctuates based on our operating cost. So it's not quite a fixed capital contribution like we do out of the operating side, the non-water side where, you know, we contribute, you know, 2.9 million towards capital reserves. That number is a changing number based on our operational needs in any given year. And the only other thing I'd say based on that is in this year in 2025, we are doing a water rate study. So a lot of that projection out will get picked up within that rate study as well. That will include capital components, so.
Okay. Any other questions for the presenter? I have no hands up. Thank you very much for your time this evening, Ms. Taylor. And uh, as it's been mentioned, we are very much believers in asset management and we know that the data is only as good as what goes into it. And we know that our staff are working hard to make that as accurate as possible on a daily basis so that we can forecast forecast as best we can um, when it comes to our levy and how we manage the funds. Uh, councillor Lackey, you have a question?
Through you worship, if you don't mind, uh, to indulge me just, uh, if you could run me through one scenario with the asset management plan and something that maybe is unforeseen. Uh, for instance, a new asset, um, say for instance, council decides that uh, we want to indulge in a new small craft uh, airport. Um, how do we plug that into the asset management plan?
Great question. Go ahead, Mr. Treasurer.
It's it's uh, new or net new above and beyond. It's not currently captured in the asset management plan. Um, we could work towards, so like a new airport, we don't have an airport, that's not in there. So this is based on replacement of existing assets. So that is a current limitation of the amp.
I can add as well that the 2025 proposed levels of service will be kind of centering around that growth. So anything that you guys have intended to, you know, add to the municipality that can be looked at as a proposed level of service and we can work that into the financial plan in that way. Um, but as Phil mentioned, it's not actually captured in the current asset management plan because it looks at only replacement and rehabilitation needs of the current assets you own. But it would be incorporated into a proposed level of service for the 2025 requirements.
Does that answer your question councillor Lackey? Okay. Okay, well, I have no other hands up, so I will thank you for your presentation and we will move forward with our agenda for this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so next item is staff reports. Um, so uh, 5.1 2020 24 asset management plan moved by councillor maybe seconded by deputy mayor Fodi, the committee hole that recommends that council approve 2024 asset management plan as attached to corporate services 2025 dash 006. Any questions or concerns? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and through you. And it's basically based off of the last uh, presentation we just had. One of the things that I've seen many times is that it says town, not township in the document. To me, it should be township. So it's a correction that should be done. It's just, if we're gonna do it, let's do it. Um, sanitary and water system. It was mentioned that uh, there's no nothing in the sanitary system requiring um, uh, monies from that asset management, but that's base basically because of the water storage. I I take it. The only reason I mention it is that if you increase your water, you increase your waste usually. I don't know if there's anything to add.
Do you?
Thank you through your worship. Um, in 2025, we will be looking at the environmental assessment for the the wastewater, similar to what we'd done for the the water previously. Um, that was part of my my work plan for 2024, but it didn't make sense to move forward until we knew what our water needs were. Um, so that's something that we're actually working on the RFP for as we speak and we'll have more information as we move through that process.
And it's just basically the Lansdowne system that that was on that. This is the only system we have, so.
That's correct.
That's uh, good. Uh, page 25 and 20, parks, land improvement. I was kind of baffled by what would be improved there.
Through you, your worship, the big one for 25 is the Ivy Lee wharf. Because we hadn't constructed that by 2022, we were using previous data to to move forward with. So that's an update that you'll see in 2025 where that's now being completed.
Okay.
And that'll that'll drop off.
And on page 2621, furniture and fixtures. I was kind of baffled by that amount.
Mr. Treasurer. You're talking about the one with the graph with the different colors on it?
Uh, I'd have a little up here. Let me see. Uh, page uh, 2621, I think it had, yeah, the, I think it was the color.
Furniture and fixtures, the overall condition of the asset.
277,000. So it's kind of wondering.
Says that there's a 200K uh, furniture and fixtures in very poor condition. Is that what you're?
Yeah, yeah, I was just wondering.
Um, through you mayor, the the poor condition of mainly the furniture and stuff and mainly relates to office furniture. Um, so if we buy in bulk or um, a few years ago when they were setting it up, they did some pooled bulk assets of furniture. Um, generally that's all age based, so it's reached its ex ex um, expect a useful life.
Aged out.
Uh, we're not necessarily replacing it, but based on that age, it's saying all our desks and all our stuff are aged out, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Meanwhile, the desk still works.
Yeah, yeah.
They're still perfectly.
Well, well, that's what I was kind of getting at. Have have we, are we furnishing something brand new or or it's just replacement value of current furniture that may need to be replaced or is going to be replaced?
The inside the asset management plan, it would be based on the existing uh, furniture within the capital asset database. And that would be um, based on uh, inflation. So it's, um, those are the things we go back to look and refine. So if there are things in there that we know we're not going to replace, we can go in and say not replace and that'll drop it off the replacement. Um, that requires kind of an annual review. So that's kind of the cleanup that Dave and myself kind of go through as much as we can, see what needs. So you 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 can put assets to not replace, well, we'll draw them off if we know we're not buying Phil a new desk.
Okay. And I still have more unfortunately. Um, uh, 6459 landfills, not phased. Uh, nothing there for the landfills. So as much as we're trying to extend their life, there's still costs related to them to keep them as um, what's the term? There's a word there totally gone, transfer station. So there's still money needing to be put toward landfill site in some form, but it's not listed on this.
Is that because of the dedicated reserve that's required for the province? You're talking, you don't, you're not seeing it on here?
No, I, but there was one particular spot. Uh, let's see, 6459. Let's see. Let's get that on here.
I know, uh, through you mayor. So with the landfill specifically, within the asset database, for the most part, the majority of the asset is actually, it's a land asset. So from a asset replacement point of view, you don't amortize and you don't replace land. So a lot of that doesn't get captured in here. Now, the asset retirement obligations, which is a totally separate thing, which came in last year, that is based on the cost of when you do have to close that landfill. One, there's the cost to close it. And then two, there's the ongoing cost every year of maintaining that closed landfill cost. So that is picked up in the asset retirement obligation. That's not necessarily an app. It's not an asset replacement cost.
Just that uh, 4.1.29 asset inventory and replacement costs. At the bottom of it says landfills three, not planned for replacement and there's no dollar amount, but we still have to use it for a transfer station. That's what I'm getting at. There's still dollars required for it.
Go ahead, Director Holiday.
Thank you through your worship. So I I I think we're talking two different things. There's there's the transition from the the landfill as as we we have it currently um, to the transfer, to a transfer station. So it'll still operate on the same facility and that's covered in the uh, in the 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 funding that Phil's talking about. This is to construct a new landfill to replace it. And and that's in here, we we wouldn't get approved for another.
Yeah, wow. Kind of kind of knew that.
That's that's the difference between the two. So there is money in a in a separate uh, pool. Um, then from this, which is to, it's like when you buy a new truck, you know, the new truck replaces the old one. This is, this would be building a new landfill to replace the old one.
But our transfer station requires money to keep it open, to maintain it. So that's where I'm kind of.
Correct, which would be part of of that existing property. And and the money that we have to put away to to transfer from the landfill and and cap it and close it and then operate it as a a transfer station at that point.
Thank you. Um, and then uh, 9388 wells, poor, 39%. Um, so kind of wondering, are we replacing wells in the near future?
Sorry, through your worship. So with with the wells, there there's really no, um, and I've I've had this conversation with Aqua as well. There there's really no defined timeline when a well will come to the end of its useful life. It's it's like at your house. You know, you you've had your, you've been living in your house for 50 years and and using the same well. You don't abandon that well unless it runs out of water. Um, so a timeline was put on the replacement of a well at when asset management was first established. And that's, that's not the way that it works. You know, if we have to expand the system, then we build another well. We wouldn't just abandon and and move to another well unless there was something that happened to that water that that made us abandon that for for a purpose. Um, so it, in terms of the the upkeep and operation, that's that's accounted for separately. So like the uh, you might, we do inspections of our our wells, we'll replace the pumps. We may have to do some work to the the actual liner of of the well itself, uh, which we do. And I think we budgeted this year, if I'm not mistaken, in in capital for some work to be done to our well. But looking at the long-term abandonment of the well and and uh, you know, the creation of a new one, that doesn't happen unless we're looking at some sort of issue that's that's occurred with that water source and we're looking at another water source. Or if we have to expand and and add water to the system, which I hope that answers.
We are proposing it, but it did say poor and that's what kind of caught me off guard. It it's more the word because I thought the wells were in good condition.
Right, so it's based on a on a timeline and, you know, the what we've been operating the system for, like I think of a life expectancy of 50 years was established initially. So we're starting to approach that 50 years, which pushes it down towards that that poor state. But that's not the case. It's it's an adjustment that we'll have to make as we move forward. Just to say that, yes, we're not going to replace our wells at 50 years with with new wells.
Okay. And the agency that that tests our water is what?
Aqua.
Aqua? Okay, so the Ontario Clean Water Agency, what are they? Is that Aqua?
That's correct. That's.
Okay, so in the document, they have Ontario Water Clean Agency, not OCWA.
We can get that fixed.
Just another little thing I find, what can I say? Um, and other than that, it's a good document. I did enjoy reading all the pages um, diligently and uh, thank you for the great report. Thank you.
Okay, I had councillor Gurrell's hand up. Any other hands that I can add to the list? Okay, go ahead councillor.
Thank you and through you, your worship. So on item 5.1 that we've come to and are discussing, it's tabled. 30,000 foot view, what we're being asked to do is um, approve a document that makes us compliant with a government reg 58817. I am very skeptical of many of the numbers, as I said earlier, but really uh, I don't believe that by approving this for the reason of the compliance, I think that's pretty clear. I don't think that we're overly committed to the financial um, statements in there. Uh, I may be wrong. And if I am wrong, then I'd like this deferred while we can have further discussion. Because I still, again, the numbers are are fixed in time. The document is supposed to be fluid, but things have occurred. Big numbers have occurred since this document was fixed, the postcard in time. So I have no problem approving the document to comply with the 2025 requirements for sure. Um, and I do appreciate, I guess what I'm seeing is I think 500, $600,000 is probably under underfunding this issue, I guess. It seems a little light to me. And I don't want to, in in a few months' time, I don't want someone coming back saying, well, geez, you approved that that council meeting. And uh, and I don't want to have to say, yeah, but, does that make any sense?
Yeah, I I I I see where you're going. I'll let the CAO speak to that.
I thank you worship and through you. Um, you you you've identified a lot of things here and it's, you're 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 correct. There, this is a moving target. And really, this is a document that's been generated based on the best information and where we could update it with the most current costs, then then we are. But if you're, if you're looking for, uh, this is 100% and this is what it is, you you don't get that in an asset management plan and it's not us. It's not that Kingston's got one that's 100% accurate or Ottawa's got one. I mean, it's just not the nature of the beast. What an asset management plan does is it gives you, it gives you a picture of where you're going in a very broad sense of the word. You're not committing by approving the plan, you're not committing to a 2% increase for capital over the next, no, 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 no. Every year we come back and we do our budget with you and that's, you've got to take, you get, council gets to look at this and and in greater detail on what we're planning to do on a particular year. This gives you a 10-year snapshot of where we're going based on the best information that we have as the financial plan. But it's not, it's not a, you know, this is cast in stone. Look at how much it has changed since 2022 when we did it. Um, you know, and we're as a staff learning as well as we go through this. The roads were originally all classified as urban and that had a whole different offset to it. And we learned through the process that, okay, no, we we picked that up. And it's, it significantly reduced the numbers in this. So it it's an evolution. It's a living document as as a number of you have appreciated and and stated. It it just gives us kind of where we're at and how we can plan and what's coming up. Where do we see the things coming up? Where are the time of the asset, where what assets are are coming to the end of their lifespan? And it lets us to plan, it lets us plan appropriately so that we can come to council annually on the budget stuff and maybe a little more if there's something unforeseen and we need to to draw some capital that's not part of the budget. But it it really is just a, it's a planning document for us. And it's mandated, as you pointed out, and we need to comply with um, the Ontario regulations and and, you know, working with a firm like PSD. Um, they're the ones who have provide us their expert advice and experience to make sure that we comply with all of this stuff. So, you know, it is, it's a comprehensive document and and if I get that, you're not going to get that. Is that this $584,000 accurate? Well, I'd love to come back next year and say, guess what? It's now $400,000. I kind of hope we do, but as our knowledge, as our knowledge of uh, evolves and we get better at our data uh, and we update based on costs uh, that we are actually seeing. Um, you know, this is, this is the best we can do at the, with the information that we have at this point in time.
Sorry, I turned my mic off. So councillor Gurrell, I guess to pin a bow on that, this does not, by approving this document, this is a project. By approving this document, this is a projected amount that they're saying is the difference. It's not what we're obligated to find in the budget or find next year. It's just, it's helping forecast things. And by passing this document, uh, if council chooses to do so, that we're in compliance, that we have at least a cohesive and comprehensive list of all of our assets and we're looking at them in the futuristic sense of either maintaining them or replacing them. Is that correct? Would that be the, the smallest snippet there?
Yes, through your worship, yes, that's what council is approving, that we will be legislatively compliant.
Awesome.
That's it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, worship and through you, your statement that we're not bound to this, so to speak. I assume that works for the provincial government as well. When the asset management was pitched to us, there was wording in there that said asset management plan would be tied to government grants.
No, it said that we would not be eligible for government grants if it wasn't done.
Right. Have we received an overwhelming supply of government grants from the province?
At this point, no, we have not. Um, however, uh, we don't need anything further working against us. We need to have this done. And I know there are a number of other municipalities who have, still have an Excel spreadsheet, which is very different than what we're working with here. And I know that um, while not perfect and not ever going to be perfect, it is much closer to better forecasting what our needs will be for what we have in the future. So. And if there's no other comments, I'm going to call the question on this motion, uh, that the committee whole, oh, sorry.
I just still, again, through you, your worship, we had in the last budget, we had the ten-year plan. Uh, a financial plan prepared by Phil. Phil, would it be um, asking too much to update that piece of paper based on some of this, those new numbers? Or is that a very challenging and time-consuming thing? Would it be an easy hit the few buttons on the computer?
So that, through you, Mary, that ten-year capital plan that we brought for the twenty twenty-five budget. That is based, that would be based on more up-to-date information in the sense that any new assets that have been added since twenty twenty-two. Um, it also, that does include some projects that wouldn't be captured in the app like um, the landfill mining project was in there, the landstone urbanization, stuff like that. But I would say that ten-year window that was brought as part of twenty twenty-five's budget. If you remove the landfill mining and the landstone urbanization, which are really above and beyond. That ten-year window would have an annual requirement of four point seven million.
Of how much?
Four point seven about, compared to the three point nine, just as a reference point. So it is a bit more accurate because it is shorter term. Yes, the longer you go out, less accurate things become.
Thank you. Thanks for that. Appreciate it. Yep.
Okay, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of the motion at hand? All those opposed and it is carried. Okay, uh, we've been at this for an hour and forty-five minutes. I think we'll take a comfort break and come back to the five point two uh, general rates and fees by law amendment. And uh, so we'll take uh, seven minutes, we'll come back. Uh, yeah, seven minutes, we'll come back at seven fifty, please. Thank you. It is seven fifty P M and we'll move forward with five point two amendment to general rates and fees by law. And the motion comes from Deputy Mayor Fody and Second Abid Councilor Maybe that the committee of the whole recommends that council grant three readings, final passage to by law number twenty twenty-five dash zero zero six being a bylaw to repeal by law. Twenty-four dash zero zero one and mend by law twenty-three dash zero zero two being a bylaw to establish general rates and fees for various services provided by the municipality. Questions on the report? Go ahead councillor, oh councillor Lackey, go ahead and then councillor Maybe.
Uh, through you, your worship, just a question as to uh, going through most of them. Some appear to have some um, some really good reasoning. Um, but for many of the others, um, I won't go through them line by line, but what, what was the spur, spur this year? Because I do recall that we, uh, we raised uh, most of the rates not that terribly long ago. Um, so has there been an abuse, uh, something, I mean, aside from insurance increases and that uh, type of thing? What?
What spurred this on?
What spurred this? Uh, uh, recreation facilities, I hate to, to raise those um. Um, it's hard enough to get kids out doing things outside. Um, our um, you know, as far as our rental for uh, one Jesse Street. Um, unless we um, have put a pile of money into it, I don't see where it warrants even what we're already charging for what they get.
So is that a, that's a you question or um, Marnie, I'm not sure if you're, no, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Uh, thank you through your worship. Um, I brought Alex here tonight as well to, to speak to this. Um, overall, we did a, a review of how our rates were with other municipalities, similar size. Um, and we are way behind. We looked at uh, twenty fifteen as a comparison with the municipality and, and not a lot of changes had been, had been made. Um, just some of the comparables like Loyalist, their, their hourly for a hall rental is fifty-two dollars an hour. Daily is five hundred and fifty-six. Uh, North Grenville is thirty-two dollars an hour. Eleven hundred and sixty-three dollars for, for the day, Friday night and Saturday. Um, Rito Lakes has a couple rates, unlicensed, licensed and daily uh, resident, uh, resident, non-resident. Um, they're one ninety-seven, three fifty-five for unlicensed and licensed for a resident and two ninety-three, three ninety-three uh, for unlicensed, licensed and, and non-resident. Uh, City of Brockville for just a meeting room is a hundred and forty-four dollars for the day. Up to eight hundred and thirty dollars for the day for kitchen chairs and tables. Um, Town of Gan for the arena is twenty-one, twenty-two an hour or two hundred and sixty-five dollars a day, doesn't have a kitchen. Uh, City Kingston has just a flat rate of fifty-four dollars ninety-one cents an hour, no daily rate. Uh, plus cleaning, plus security. So there's some plus plus on top of that. Um, in addition to that, we're looking at the costs that we're incurring with our facilities. Uh, just this year alone, the dishwasher at one Jesse Street costs over six thousand dollars just to keep it running. Um, it's something that we have to maintain to remain in compliance with the health unit. So that costs, we're not really covering that currently. Um, and then Alex did a thorough analysis of, you know, the, the hourly rates versus the daily rates. And you want to talk to that a little bit, how you, you have your own? Yep, no problem.
Hi, um. Hello, your worship and through you, I'm not sure if that's right, but um, so essentially what I kind of did is I, like Dave said. Um, I really looked at what was around local to us, any township that was kind of surrounding us to ensure that we're in line with them and not um, exceeding them drastically. Um, I also did not want to deter recreation in many ways. And so kind of also part to that is what's not included on here is that groups can still also um, apply to community grants um, for um, funding towards programs. And quite often, anything that actually happens within our um halls as it is. Um, most of it, if uh, I don't really know the percentage of it off the top of my head, but most of it actually does come in at uh, qualified rates. I know most groups um, that do put on qua- uh, like wonderful events in the area. Um, we do also do additional um, assistance to some of those programs. So um, at no cost to them, we ensure that um, electricity is available outside. We ensure that we can give cones and things like that to uh, road closures. Um, there's a lot of things that are not captured in these rates and fees as well that we also like to provide um, at no cost. Um, and then additional to that, um, a, a big part of what I wanted to do is I also wanted to make it um, make sense. So if you were to compare what we did last year, um, say to a full hall rental versus a qualified entity or individual, there was a gap. So the percentage between the two didn't have uh, a, a, a good percentage, or not a good percent, but an equal percentage um, of the hourly to the daily rate. Um, so I tried to make sure that they all kind of aligned in that sense as well. Um, and then also I wanted to ensure that a lot of the things that we were doing um, made sense in that while we were creating these rates, there was an equal amount of time. So um, it wasn't really stated very clearly before um, what a daily rate constituted to. So in this rates and fees, I ensured that it was actually stated that it's a twelve-hour uh, rate for the daily rate. And um, it's hourly there thereafter. Um, same with like ball diamonds, before it was per game. So it also wasn't consistent over the full rates and fees. So I tried to just do a lot of cleaning up and give parameters to the rates and fees. Um, sorry. Oh, yes, and sorry, things like um, the docking and things like that, there wasn't really parameters or anything that kind of explained what it was. So I included per foot per day, um, or per, you know, per foot per season. Because before, if you were to look at the rates and fees, somebody would actually just look at it and say, for the season, it's going to cost you X dollars, like fifty-two fifty, because it wasn't outlined what that meant. So there was a lot of that as well.
Okay, um, Mr. Maybe, you had some questions as well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. Yes, I actually landed on the same section, uh, schedule E. One of the noted things uh, that I got there is on the um, mainly because I've had to do this myself. Is the, for funerals and celebrations uh, and that they need to have insurance. Um, which can be a very costly venture in itself depending on who you use. So um, having, as I said, done this just recently. And I know it's hard to actually suggest somebody, but there is a wide variety of costs for insurance for the same same thing. So um, it's very difficult and I, I know we have insurance on the building, but I don't know. It, it's one of those ones I have a lot of trouble with is, you know, somebody getting their own insurance for a building and, and having the municipality part of it, so. I guess my question is, I would like to see that we have suggestions on who they could go to. Because there are a couple companies that are really cheap and have the same amount of coverage. So I don't know.
Okay.
You know.
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. Um, so when anybody does actually request a space um, and it doesn't matter any space that's on municipal property, um, I'm given the, I give the option that we actually have user insurance. Um, so that's something that we offer to anybody that wants to use the space. Um, and it's fairly reasonable rates for most things. Now inherently, there's a lot of risk with different things. So something say that has alcohol would have a higher risk. Um, a higher number of people has, people has a higher risk. Um, when it comes to something like a celebration of life, so long as there's no alcohol, um, it would come in similarly to a meeting, which is very low risk. Um, additional to that, when I reply back, I give uh, the requirements around the insurance. And I also give a list of other insurance companies that are available that offer special events insurance. Um, and each person that would look to rent the space can reach out to those groups. Um, because I cannot, I'm not the one that's renting the space, they can reach the group, uh, reach out. Um, because I cannot, I'm not the one that's renting the space, they can reach the group, uh, reach out to the company to ask them about the insurance and quote, get quotes and costs. Um, I never force our user insurance on anybody. I offer it, um, because it is a service that we, or a, something that we provide. Um, knowing that I also include, like, we do not endorse the companies. It's just simply, here's a list of other options that you can choose from. Um, any group that uses our facilities in the township, um. Actually, I think most of the smaller groups use, uh, the user insurance, uh, in many ways, the pickleball groups, the seniors groups, things like that. Any of the larger groups actually have a lot of their own insurance. Um, so that really doesn't, you know, apply to them. The only thing that may, uh, trigger a difference in their insurance, and again, that's just asking the proper questions is if they're looking to have alcohol, they're looking to bring in. Something with a higher risk, you know, a bounty castle, something along those lines.
Yeah. So there's no exemption to anybody using the hall. They all have to have some sort of insurance coverage.
Um, no, no, that's a requirement for any rental.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Unless you're having like chainsaw masker, you know, not chainsaw masker, that's not what I meant. Chainsaw demonstration, all I'm thinking of is when they're doing the carving, you know? It's, I meant, I meant, uh, yeah, sorry, it's long day. I apologize. Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Growl, my apologies.
Thank you to, uh, you, you worship. On the, uh, court rentals, I remember quite a discussion when we were talking pickleball and so on. These are for, or pardon me, I should rephrase that. Do we still do the, uh, phone in for the reservation? And if you were to just walk onto the court, it's free? Is that the way that works?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. So any time that there's a rental, we do ask them to use the portal to, uh, request their space. As they work through the portal, there's questions to ask them. Um, so that's for a booking. Anyone who wants to use it for passive use where it's not an event that we're, you know. Um, set to have, you know, multiple groups of people show up at a time for an event. In that case, that would be considered a tournament, in which case that would require a booking. Does that clarify that question or does that make it more confusing?
If you want to preclude anyone else from using it, you have to book it.
No, that's, that's the way I always understood, the booking fixes.
But anybody can use it.
But if you just at six o'clock at night decided to go down there and play some pickleball or something, you can just walk on the court and play.
So that would be considered passive use. It's the same as anyone using a park. They can use it.
It's free and it's free. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments in regards to this? Okay, I will call the question. All those in the affirmative, please say aye. All those opposed and this carried. Thank you. Uh, next item is five point three Linters Events Arts and Fairs Inc., Leaf Inc., request to join partnership for economic enhancement and revitalization. Moved by Monique Anton Hartley, seconded by Deputy Mayor Foddy, that the committee of the whole recommends that council approve. Linters Events Arts and Fairs Inc. to join the partnership for economic enhancement revitalization peer working group. Discussion on the motion. I don't have, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, through you. Just for clarity, is there any other Linters group that's a member of peer?
I believe there are two.
So this will be the third.
Go ahead.
Sorry, currently, uh, this will be the, the second, the chamber is kind of not specific, it's, the chamber's gone through its own changes. Um, but the Lindhurst, the L C O, the Linters Community Organization.
Yeah.
Uh, joined last year. Um, that is the group that, um, every year there is an annual budget for peer, one for each of the four areas. Um, they do, L C O receives that funding. Leaf is not looking for that. They're just looking to be a part of peer, to be a part of the discussion. Um, talking with them, they're really focused on, they mainly do the turkey fair and the parade. They're very valuable, uh, members. They've been contributing for a while. So they're really focused on those kinds of events. So that, that's why they're looking to be a part of peer.
But they're not receiving the grant.
No, they're not receiving the money. Um, I would also say officially, there are, um, there are other areas, uh, Lansdowne, for example. Um, uh, Lafer's on it and L A S are both on it. Not only Lafer receives the funding, L A S doesn't, so. It's similar to other areas in the township as well.
It's really more about a collaboration and, and keeping everybody in the loop about what's going on with different organizations.
Thank you. No, it's more about clarity because there's been some moving targets in Linters the last few years. And I was losing math as to how many groups were actually representing the village. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, uh, any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, all those opposed, it is carried. Next item is R F T O P S dash twenty twenty five dash zero zero five. Motion is from Deputy Mayor Foddy, seconded by Counselor Maybe, that the committee of the whole recommends council authorize the end award of the tender O P S twenty twenty five dash. Zero zero five, the supply and application of surface treatment to Miller paving in the amount of. Five hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and eighty one dollars and fifty eight cents plus the net H S D. Discussion on the motion? Go ahead, Counselor Growl.
Once again, I'm through you, your worship. Once again, I'm always confused exactly what we're getting, uh, what we're doing. It says, uh, the capital budget, single surface treatment with fog coat. And then these roads, um, in question, uh, is scheduled to receive double surface treatment with fog seal. So could you explain that to me?
I'd love to. Thank you. Uh, so the, the single surface treatment, it, it's perfect timing, given that you guys just saw the, the asset management plan. It's the little, the little loops that you see on the curve where we're trying to extend the life of the asset before we have to rebuild it. So the more single surface treatments that we do, it's, it's a, a single coat of, of asphalt with granular on top. And then what we do is we put a fog seal on top of that to keep all the gravel in. So that the, the gravel in a surface treated road is your strength. You know, you have a lift of asphalt and it bonds together and becomes like concrete. And that's your strength. But with surface treatment, it's actually the granular itself. So you want to try to retain as much of that as possible. So, you know, the standard practice is to put the asphalt and then the gravel on top and half the gravel ends up in the ditch. We put the fog seal on top, which keeps all the gravel and keeps all the strength. It's, it's good investment to, to try to maintain that as much as possible. So that's a single surface treatment, which we put on an existing, uh, surface treated road. We go around and we evaluate them and we start to see some of the, the degradation, some streaking in the surface, maybe a couple of potholes here and there. So we'll patch that up and we'll put a single on top of that, which, which covers it back up again, extends the life another four or five years. Um, versus the double. So a double is like Kid Road South from, from Eden Grove to, to Fairfax is a gravel road currently. So as you're building the road, the first time or you're rebuilding the road, you put a double on, because a single just doesn't have that strength that you're looking for. Um, so we will put the double on and then subsequently after that, we'll do the singles every four or five years to extend the life of that asset.
So the, uh, amount we're looking at, I remember clearly in the budget, there was five hundred thousand dollars for upgrading. Um, gravel roads and we can only do so much per year, blah, blah. But this isn't that. This is, this is putting a single surface with a sealer. On already existing, but in need of repair, double surface roads?
So the, this is a little bit of both, actually. Um, the, the double on Kid Road South comes out of that five hundred thousand, as will the, the asphalt on, on Washburn Road. So that, that budget will, will cover Kid Road South and, and Washburn this year. The, the single surface treatment comes out of the, the hard surface preservation budget that we have. Where we'll do micro surfacing and we'll do these, these types of singles to extend the life of the asset. So we have a separate pot of money that, that those types of treatments will come out of, our crack sealing, our micro surfacing and our, uh, our seal coats all come out of that budget.
So single surface is a bit of tar, gravel and a fog seal.
Correct. On an existing.
On an existing, I should write that down for future reference.
I'm, I'm happy to take you on a tour and take a look.
Uh, go ahead, Deputy Mayor Foddy.
Thank you, your worship, through you, to our Director of Operations. Are you seeing much of a percentile increase since COVID on the cost of such applications? Or are they staying somewhat normal?
Um, through your worship, we're seeing a, a constant incline. Um, and I'm, I'm not sure what the, what the cause is, you know, it was, it was COVID and it was the, the cost of supply going up. And, and this may still be the tail end of that. The costs continue to, to, to escalate with everything that we do, whether it's asphalt or, or surface treatment or buying equipment or whatever. The costs just continue to go up and, you know, I can imagine what, what tariffs will do to it as well too, as we move forward. It's just another reason for the costs to jump up. Um, but in advance of, of us, you know, planning our year, we do reach out to the contractors and, and get an understanding of what the costs are. So we'll reach out and just say like, what do you guys look, looking at for numbers for this year? And they'll, they'll give us an idea. And we, we make those adjustments so that we know that we're going to be good with the budget as we, we move forward.
Okay, like.
Any other questions in regards to the surface treatment to Miller paving? I see no hands up. I'll call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed and carried. Next item is five point five, naming the private lane currently fifty one and fifty three Front Street, proposing scenic view lane. Motion comes forward from Counselor Kelman, seconded by Counselor Maybe, that the committee of the whole recommend that council approve. Scenic View Lane as the name for the proposed private street, which is currently addressed as fifty one and fifty three Front Street Rockport. And that the committee of the whole recommend that council approves exhibit A to Planning and Development Report Number twenty twenty five. Dash zero one three being a bylaw to name a private street scenic view lane. Discussion on the motion? Have no hands up. I'll call the question. All those in favor, all those opposed, it is carried. Number six, unfinished business. Any unfinished business? Go ahead, Counselor Lackey.
Um, just a question as to, uh, where we ended up with natural gas.
Natural gas. So when we were at Roma, we spoke to the area manager. Um, and I'm, his name is escaping me, as our former clerk had introduced us. Um, and there is expansion coming, they're waiting for the next batch of funding that's coming from the province. And that they're willing to have conversations with us in regards to what that may look like. Uh, they're just in a holding pattern until the end of this election, uh, as there was a pot previously. And it was expected to be a second pot, pot of money to come forward for expansion. When, did I get that right, Angie? And, yep, go ahead.
Without any, sorry, through your worship, without any obligation, we do have a good ally on the inside now.
Yeah. It is helpful. Go ahead, Counselor Maybe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, and one other thing of the four oh one expansion, it looks like it's, uh, starting to get underway again. Or some information has been passed on through the papers just recently on it. Being surveyed and getting ready. So that's a good sign.
I did receive something in my mailbox alerting me to, uh, surveying that's going to be happening in our area regardless. Or in, in regards to, uh, the widening. So that certainly will take a long time, but, uh, the work has to be done ahead of time. So. Any other unfinished business? I have no hands up. Other business? Notices of motion? And any notices of motion? Okay. Is in regards to the mayor's update. And seems that March is coming in sort of like a lion. Um, Friday night was definitely an interesting drive home, turning into March first. Um, but then had some beautiful skies, uh, over the weekend, cold but beautiful. Um, there's definitely things that are continuing on. Um, I had the, uh, pleasure of attending the award center. The official award ceremony at the library with the archives and the historical society. Uh, Counselor Kelman was also there. Um, and, uh, a good robust group of individuals that, that came out to celebrate that. And, and I'm very much reminded, uh, because it's a hundred and seventy five year celebration for the United Counties. That the preservation of our collective history is very important. So I'm very grateful to the individuals who. Take their own time to preserve our history, um, preserve the past and write the stories that may be forgotten otherwise. So, um, I thank the library. I thank you, uh, Cindy for helping host that and, and being the M C for the event. Um, it was a great evening. Uh, I. Trying to, I'm blanking out. I don't know if there's any other events that I've attended, uh, after our last council meeting. I don't think so. Um, as far as what's coming up, March break is next week and our council meeting will be the following week. So we have postponed it when we set our agenda or our dates for, uh, council, that will be not next Monday, but the following Monday. Sorry, Tuesday. Saint Pat, that's right. We can't afford to have it on Saint Patrick's Day. How dare we? Um, any other events or announcements, uh, for events that are going on? Oh, we also have our training, council training meeting, which is Thursday, the sixth, and it's at the Ivy. Uh, that is, uh, work plan and training day. So. Any, go ahead.
Through you, your worship, uh, Sealeys Bay Legion, it will be four nine one is hosting on the twenty sixth of March. Um, an opportunity for, uh, vets or vets families. Um, who may be struggling to come out and there's going to be an information session. With, um, Veterans Affairs and Kingston. Military family, uh, support group center and, uh, but the entire, uh, community is invited to come. Because, uh, you might know somebody who needs that, that kind of support, uh, who won't, uh, don't, who need that. He's going to be back with, uh, another chapter of his journey.
Far north, it is well worth the investment of time. Uh, his, his stories are so meaningful and, and really enriching. From an outsider's point of view, so I would highly recommend it. Anything else? If not, we'll move in camera. Moved by Counselor, Deputy Mayor Foddy, seconded by Counselor Kelman, the committee of the whole resolve itself. Into the committee, the whole closed meeting to consider the following items. One, adoption of the November fourth, twenty twenty four closed meeting minutes. Number two, a pro, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board, word one. Number three, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board, word one. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, all those opposed and we're carried. So we'll wait to stop the live stream and we'll, uh, excuse the relevant staff members that don't need to be here. Is that, sorry, I'm not, I shouldn't be making a call. Not you, yeah, you have to stay, Dave.